Meeting to order, may we have the roll call, please?
Boyd.
Here.
Goldbeck.
Here.
Palajin.
Here.
Hatwig.
Here.
McNary.
Here.
Roper.
Here.
Simmons.
Here.
Everyone here.
Full house. Uh, item number two, approve the meeting minutes, is there any comments or amendments to the meeting minutes? None, all motion.
I move we approve your minutes from January twenty-second, two thousand eighteen.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendments are approved. Uh, the next is agenda. Any changes to the agenda required, requested? entertain a motion?
I motion to approve.
And a second?
I'm second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have it. Nothing on the consent calendar, no continued matters, on to commission items, item number A, please, letter A.
As I figure out this uh, technology error.
Is it on this side, Laura?
It's over here.
Oh, there it is. It seems to be working.
Is that the only one? We'll get everything else plugged in.
I think so.
You're good.
Alright. Two items tonight, first item ID eighteen zero three one nine, review and approve findings for re-survey of potential L Street Historic District pursuant to Fresno Municipal Code twelve dash sixteen oh six. And item B, ID eighteen zero dash zero three two zero, review and approval with conditions of the William Soroyan House Museum pursuant to Fresno Municipal Code twelve dash sixteen seventeen. So I think um, most of you were at least able to scan the report um, I submitted regarding the re-survey of the potential L Street Historic District. Uh, here is the cover page along with the outline of that report. Just to reiterate um, the goals that were, oh, can you see?
Is that too much?
I think it's.
That's good.
Great. Um, the goals for this survey were um, to conduct an updated survey for a potential L Street District, given the interest in the area exhibited by three previous surveys conducted in nineteen seventy-seven, nineteen ninety-four, and two thousand seven. As well as the alterations and demolitions that have taken place between and since those surveys were conducted. And to determine if a potential L Street Historic District still exists. Um, here's where I get into the methodology. This was a reconnoisance survey, and the definition of a reconno- reconnoisance survey is to generally characterize existing resources and to determine if more detailed survey efforts are needed. So the following information was documented within this survey. Um, these were two definitions that were key in conducting the re-survey, the first is historic integ- integrity, which is defined as the ability of a property to convey its significance. It is based on seven aspects of integrity, location, design, setting materials, workmanship, feeling, and association. And in order for a property to retain, to retain historic integrity, it must possess most, if not all, of these aspects. And second was the definition of a local historic district according to the Fresno Municipal Code, which means any finite group of resources related to one another in a clearly distinguishable way. Or any geographical definable area which possesses a significant concentration, linkage, or continuity of sites. Buildings, structures, or objects united historically or aesthetically by plan or physical development. It must be significant as well as identifiable, and it must meet local register criteria in order to be considered for listing on the register. So just to give you an idea of the process, um, I went through, I created this table, which consists of um, all the categories listed on the right side of the page. And one of the, this was um, information gathered that was readily available, or that I found to be particularly relevant for the survey. And key to the survey was determining um, the integrity of each site. Um, I also determined the survey area, um, which was based um, on the nineteen seventy-seven survey area because it encompassed all of um, the survey areas that were included in the nineteen ninety-four and the two thousand seven surveys. And also um, included photo sheets to give you um, a glimpse of all of the photos that were taken, a hundred and twenty-five um, in total for this survey. Um, so some background, um, there were three surveys previously conducted within the past forty years, nineteen seventy-seven and nineteen ninety-four, and then two thousand seven. Um, and each of these surveys had its own findings. And really, the only thing consistent was, I found, was the row of houses on the west, uh, I believe seventeen hundred block of L Street. Um, and in between these surveys and also since them, there have been numerous alterations and demolitions which led to the need for the current survey. Um, here is uh, so I did a bit of research into local literature and city plans. Um, and as you can see on the left, this is a zoning map from, that was produced in nineteen seventeen, um, noting uh, the subject area as um, specifically a single-family residential. And it's also singled out in this um, proposed system of main ar- traffic arteries for Fresno uh, map, noting that there are no main arteries going through it, it's meant to be, it was meant intentioned um, to be a single-family residential area. Um, and this was from Fred, um, Heritage Fresno Homes and People, in nineteen seventy-five, they did um, a citywide survey documenting homes that were worthy of preservation. Um, and this was the um, only area noted within um, the original boundaries of the city of Fresno. Um, and as you can see, um, they particularly noted the houses along L Street. And in order for me to get um, a greater sense of the neighborhood identity, I also looked at more recent um, documentation which included the Fulton Lowell specific plan and the Fulton Corridor specific plan, which it's included in. So this L Street area is included within the area known as Fulton. Um, and more specifically within the sub-area, sub-areas of the Divisadero Triangle, um, and the cultural, the, actually, the mur- mural district, also known as the um, cultural arts district. So um, it's a bit difficult to see here, but I tried to give you an idea of the change over time, um, since eighteen ninety-eight until nineteen seventy, which is um, the scope that we, that Sanborn maps were able to give us. And as you can see, um, the yellow signifies single-family residential, so over time, that has dwindled, and even by nineteen seventy, it was dwindling. Um, and it was starting, this area was starting to be overtaken by more um, commercial and institutional uses. Um, in addition, this also, just for the purposes of giving you a general sense of the change over time, um, the earliest um, historic aerial I had was from nineteen thirty-seven, which is um, circa the end date of the period of significance that his, this historic district would have had. Um, if it, if it did exist, um, through to current um, current time. Um, and so, this is um, basically what my findings culminated in, the um, survey area map with um, analysis done based on findings in my uh, survey area table, um, based on research. And based on previous surveys that were conducted. So currently, there's only one block consisting of uninterrupted properties that retain historic integrity. Um, and that could contribute to a potential L Street Historic District, and this is the east side of the sixteen hundred block of M Street. Um, which only has two properties, um, the Einstein Home, um, and the YWCA Residence Hall. Um, and eight out of the approximately nineteen blocks included within the survey area consist entirely of properties that do not retain integrity, that could not contribute to a potential L Street Historic District. Seven out of the nineteen blocks consist of, um, sorry, uh, other than nineteen blocks consist of a majority of properties that do not retain integrity and could not contribute to a potential district. Three of the nineteen blocks consist of a majority of properties that do not retain integrity and could contribute to a potential district. And these include the west side of the seventeen hundred block of L Street I mentioned earlier, and the west side of the sixteen hundred block of L Street, and the south side of the fourteen hundred block of Divisadero. So in conclusion, um, I found that the district was not eligible for a National Register, California Register, or local designation. Um, and this was because the remains of, of a cohesive district are not identifiable. There, the air, present area lacks significant concentration, linkage, linkage, and continuity. And I think it's important to document um, the area, uh, but um. It's, it's worth noting that a lot of these properties are already listed on the local register. And so, uh, my conclusion was that it was ineligible. Geography, um, staff recommendation, that the commission review and approved findings and the re-survey of the potential L Street Historic District report. Completed following the initiation of a new survey of the previously identified potential L Street Historic District pursuant to Fresno Municipal Code twelve dash sixteen oh six.
That's a boatload of information.
I tried to condense it.
Yeah, no kidding.
There's a lot more.
How many houses would, in, in the L Street section would, would meet the criteria for local designation on their own?
That are not already listed, you mean? There's some that are already listed, is that right?
Want to back it up a couple of slides, that map that you had? So the yellows with the Ys are?
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, can you walk them through the legend here?
The Y, um, the properties labeled with Y were constructed between circa eighteen ninety-seven and circa nineteen thirty-seven, and they retain integrity. Um, and um, have a residential use, and therefore, um, if there were a district that they could um, contribute to it.
And the yellow is also already listed, is that correct?
Correct.
So, so are there like three maybe, or four? That, th- this would be the Y, but it's not yellow? So there's, would, is that what we're talking about, the, the, that have the local, or that could be eligible for the local register but are not currently on it?
Um, no, just that, they're not necessarily eligible for the local register, but they, if there were a district, they could potentially contribute to it.
They're not necessarily on there.
I'm, I'm not aware that, that residential use is one of the criteria, is that?
I changed in that.
That's something that I determined with my research, cause if you look at early maps, um, this was a heavy um, single-family use um, district. And it was intended to be so based on um, the zoning map I included from nineteen seventeen, so that's what I based um, that criteria on. And also, it, it was noted in the most recent survey in two thousand seven, um, it was noted as a residential historic district.
It was the resident, between eighteen ninety-seven and nineteen thirty-seven, a mix of residential style, so that's what the proposed district focused on as its theme.
Earlier surveys, like the ones in um, nineteen seventy-seven and nineteen ninety-four, they included properties that had other uses. But I don't, I don't think that was an accurate um, estimation of what uh, the district was in the early twentieth century.
Well, I appreciate you, your work on this, it's uh, really thorough, succinct, answers the question, no, we do not have a, a historic district.
Any other questions for staff?
The quest, the question about the boundaries, are the other historic districts such as Wilson Island and Porter Track, are those more defined boundaries um, than, than this? Because I'm, you know, of the non-contiguous type districts that um, kind of have more floating boundaries, does that make sense? That, how does this compare, you know, to the other districts, particularly, say, Porter Track and Wilson Island?
I did inform my analysis too, looking at the districts that already exist in Fresno. It's my understanding that uh, the Porter Track District is a solid rectangle of contributing uh, properties. And um, Wilson Island is, um, I think most of the properties within that, those blocks are contributing in a way.
Yeah.
Um, I know the hunting, the most recently adopted Huntington District is a little more zigzag, um, but it's still all on one, um, within the blocks and on one street. Um, and so, you know, the, the, that informed my assessment of really what constitutes a historic district in Fresno. I really, I, I found it difficult to argue for it in this case, um, given the discontinuity. Um, and among very, um, you know, beautiful properties, there's just not continuity.
Doesn't that set a precedent then, for thematic districts that might be non-contiguous in the future? And that if we make this decision, that it's not a district then in the future, when you have more thematic, non-contiguous districts such as the Hitching Post or Old Armenian Town? How do you make that argument, um, then for, for thematic?
Um, I guess we're crossing that bridge now, since we haven't uh, undertaken that yet, it's a good question.
But this is a different, I, I mean, this was considered as a residential district, right, which is a, I mean, it's just a different criteria, or?
Right, and, and a thematic district by its definition is discontiguous, right? And so, it seemed to me that that would be its own thing, and something like this where you're talking about a district that's spatially coherent. Um, and, and is defined by its kind of um, continuity, that's an entirely different animal than a thematic district with bungalow courts, where they might be scattered, they might be, you know, half a mile from each other. And that's by definition how you assemble that kind of district, and so, tell me if I'm wrong, Laura, but it doesn't seem like doing one, you know, one way and the other, the other way preclude each other.
No, I don't think so, um.
It seems to me that if the, if this whole process of um, recognizing identifiable districts is to have any merit, it, it has to be based on, on sort of the facts, and I think that's what you've uncovered here. And just when you look at all the ends on that map, if we were to say, well, despite all the ends, it's still a district because we want it to be a district, I think that diminishes the role of, or the importance of creating districts. It's hard to argue that when you look at all those ends, that this is a district, no matter how badly we would like it to be a district.
Cause it lacks integrity of, of feeling, you don't go through there and get that feeling of this is a residential district, so.
The lesson here is we've allowed that to happen, if we don't want that to happen anymore, then we have to be more diligent about being proactive.
So, where do we go from here in terms of the original impetus to do this?
The, the vote today is, is whether to approve the findings that there's not a district, and in terms, and then essentially, it's, you're voting it out of your jurisdiction. Cause then, and the original impetus then becomes this, just a mani- uh, a ministerial staff issue.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, do, is the, do we want to open up to the public, is there any comments from the public? Any questions on the report, there's a lot of information everyone just took in right now, if you got any questions, speak now. Come on up, please state your name and address for the records, please, and hit us with your question.
Hello, hello, Mickey Chacon, um, of, address?
Address?
Uh, six one five East Keats, resident, California. Um, I was, I hope to get a better clarification of the different markings on the map, uh, yellows compared to non-yellows, and I see some purples in there too. Uh, it was just kind of uh, confusing, this is my first time here, so I just wanna get caught up to speed with the classifications of um, having his heritage integrity, or historical integrity.
Okay. Laura, do you want to go over each one of those categories there, what each one means, one more time?
Apologies, it's not um, clear up on the screen here, but yellow is um, properties that are already listed on the local register, um, of historic resources. Um, properties uh, in yellow outlined in red are properties um, that were listed on the local register, but they've now been demolished. Um, and then the Ys that are supposed to be marked in purple, um, are properties that could potentially contribute to a historic district, um, given that they were constructed between circa eighteen ninety-seven and nineteen thirty-seven. Um, they retain integrity and possess a historic residential use. Um, and then there are also properties marked Y, um, in parentheses C or, um, or I, and that's um, for a commercial or institutional use. Um, and those properties were constructed during that, that time period, um, and retain integrity, but because they're not a historic residential use, they wouldn't contribute to a potential historic district here. And then, um, the properties marked with N, um, were not constructed during that time period and don't possess integrity. Yeah.
Come on up.
Mickey Chacon again, um, so demolished buildings that were constructed in that time period, uh, are they still influential in establishing a historic district? Okay, thanks.
Alright, any other, any other questions from the public? Come on up, please.
That's a lot of information, so.
Name and address for the record, please.
George Hostetter, seven thirty West San Ramon in Fresno, and it's uh, still not, still not clear to me why it's not, couldn't be a historic district. Uh, I walked it a lot, and it seems to have a, uh, I've done it for years, many years while I was at the B, and it has a, a feel to me. And uh, there are a lot of old buildings there, and so is there some ratio that it doesn't meet legal standards and therefore it can't be a historic district? Or is it just a subjective decision by staff? Thank you.
Is there a percentage ratio of homes to, like, overall structures, did you? Or maybe we should define contiguous a little bit better?
This is kind of a borderline thing, because it depends upon whether you're counting the number of properties or the actual, actual space that the properties take up. I will say, uh, for me personally, I did not feel a sense of continuity, um, walking through the district. Um, I felt like there were pockets of contrib- properties that could contribute, and that, um, you know, are listed on the local register in their own right, that I, um, I did not, my, in my professional opinion, encounter um, the continuity that a historic district requires.
Does that answer your question? Does that answer your question?
If there were an obvious majority of properties, you know, my conclusions would come out differently. I can only rely on the standards and guidelines that exist, and.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing is.
My intuition.
If the properties that uh, had been demolished by either fire or, or vandalism or, or demolished, in general, um, had they been still there, that would make, give us a much larger chance as far as ratio, uh, decision-making. It would be a predominant uh, thing there.
There have been numerous alterations, as I mentioned, numerous alterations and demolitions between the previous surveys and definitely since the last survey.
Some of the, and some of the houses that are listed as, with the Ns, they are of his, historic nature but commercial use? Is that correct?
That's a C.
For example, on Van Ness, there are a few properties on the west side of Van Ness that um, are labeled, they have a, a Y label, but also, um, they're labeled commercial, meaning they were built during that time period. But because they're not residential, I didn't consider them contributing. Um, and also the institutional properties, um, which are all listed on the local register, um, along M Street and Divisadero.
I think I was lost on the map on where, on L Street there.
So those would be the Y parentheses C slash I.
Yeah, exactly.
So.
So like the Marjorie Mason Center up there, uh, was that off of, is that Calaveras? Yeah.
So commercial properties can't be considered uh, as uh, contributors to a district, if it's residential?
They can, but the theme of this one was residential, so.
Initial.
Yes.
What's the current zoning for this area? Is, it's not residential, is it?
No, it's um, called downtown neighborhood for the most part, and, which allows residential, among other uses.
So the zoning would preclude, um, the, you know, the, the residential nature for our district, so everywhere that has been.
And prior to that, this area was zone C four, which was also a mixed use.
Yeah.
Kind of zone, so that, the, uh, in the, in the very early days of city planning in Fresno, that residential use was identified and kind of shielded. But um, post-war, kind of mixed-use, commercial nature of downtown slowly worked its way into, into regulation and practice in this area. The, um, the pocket around the, the core block of L Street there, I think it's the seventeen hundred block, where you have the highest concentration along the west side of, of L Street. That immediate area, um, has an overlay to preserve the low-rise nature and the setbacks that give it a more of a residential character. So anything that infills right around that core block, it could be any number of uses, but the building form would need to be similar to that of, of those homes. Um, but that's only a very small area that has that zoning overlay, so as you get out to, out past um, San Joaquin Street, down to Calaveras and, and Stanislaus, then it's a six-story height limit. And um, urban buildings up to the sidewalk are, are allowed, but right around that pocket of, of pretty intact homes, that's got that zoning overlay to, to keep the same basic building pattern in the future.
For clarification though, if, if project is being proposed, construction is being proposed adjacent to a listed property? For clarification, though, if, if project is being proposed, construction is being proposed adjacent to a listed property, don't we get to review it for continuity and basically, so you're not shadowing or shadowing all of that of the listed property? Okay.
And there's, there's even, if it's not listed, but it's from a certain era, that kind of bubbles up on staff's radar as well to see if there could possibly be issues there.
Yeah, per the general plan and the development code, whenever a demolition permit is applied for on any property, we do a quick scan and check if it's on any of the local, state, national registers, historic districts, or if it's fifty years old or older. And if it's older than fifty years, we flag it, pull it aside, and analyze it. If it seems like it could potentially be historic, we bring it to you, go through that whole process. If it's undoubtedly not, you know, eligible or potentially eligible, then we approve the demo permit and move on. So most properties, they just get approved automatically, but a small percentage get pulled, and a fraction of those come before you.
All right. Good questions from the public. Thank you. Is there any, anymore? Hearing none. I'll bring it back to the commission. Additional comments, questions from staff? Crude math shows thirty, roughly thirty-five percent Ys. Doesn't seem like enough to justify it as a district. Yeah, I tend to agree with that.
At least on a standalone residential district, and then, kind of trying to find a thematic district within it. It is also arguably, we got some really unique.
Architecture.
Architecture throughout, and it's hard to pull out the thematic thing. But it's one of my favorite neighborhoods at the same time, so, you know.
Because it's not the mapping.
Yes.
Because of all the differences.
Yeah. Yeah. And but it, it's nice to know a lot of these obviously are already protected and right at its current state, so.
More than I would have guessed.
Despite the lack of a district, there's a lot of yellow. They're doing all right.
There's a lot of adjacency to yellow, so that comes back if there is an issue.
Entertained a motion?
I move we approve the findings for a re-survey of potential L Street Historic District.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
Yea.
Thank you. Motion passes. On to the next item, B.
So item B, ID eighteen dash zero three two zero, is the review and approval with conditions of the William Saroyan House Museum pursuant to Fresno Municipal Code twelve dash sixteen seventeen. Well, first, this is a, the applicant has applied for a conditional use permit to transform the Saroyan House, which is historic property number one eight seven, into a house museum. And their proposal is to transform the interior of the house to an interpretive site for visitors. And their intention is not to alter the exterior of the property, but because this is a permit being applied for and we're on a historic property, it's required to come before you, the Historic Preservation Commission. So I'll provide you with a brief overview, and then if the applicants like to, they can speak further to what they're proposing. Just to give you an idea of the Saroyan House, so it's located at twenty-seven twenty-nine West Griffith Way. On the left is the photos that were taken in nineteen eighty-eight, reflecting what it looks like when it was listed. When it, and when it was listed, it, it was under fifty years old. So it's one of the few, if maybe only, properties we have on the local registers that's.
Around twenty years old, right?
Yeah. So it was listed under special circumstances, and on the right is a current photo of the house.
That's the corner house.
Oh, is that the wrong one? I'm sorry.
That's the corner.
My bad.
That's the one that left.
Well, you can see part of it. I'm sorry. And to just give you a glimpse of the local register nomination, it's very brief, and it describes the house as a typical tract house built in the early nineteen sixties. And it has an attached garage that jets out from the main house, a wood-hit roof, and a small front porch that is typical of most houses in the tract. And in nineteen eighty-eight, it was noted, noted as essentially the same as when he passed away in nineteen eighty-one. And then as far as the significance, it's based on, obviously, it's listed for the significance of William Saroyan and not for its architectural significance. Saroyan, according to the nominations, Saroyan burst upon the American writing scene in nineteen thirty-four with a daring young man on the flying trapeze. Then in nineteen forty, he became the first American playwright to win the Pulitzer Prize and the Drama Critic Circle Award in the same year, nineteen forty, for the play The Time of Your Life. His more than eighty bookmarks, eighty books mark him as a writer that will go down in history because his writing strikes a tone for the love of life expressed in all its stages. It was in this house so many of his books were written. It is fitting that we honor his memory by placing this house on the Register of Historical Places. So the applicants provided us with a set of existing plans, the existing site plan and the existing plan of the house, in addition to drawings for the existing facades. So the top left is the, the front, the front of the house. And I believe the bottom right is, is the rear, rear portion of the house. And then drawings for their proposed interior demolition plan, as well as their conceptual plans for the interior of the house, which they'll be repurposing as a museum. And then they also provided some sections in case they were informative of the house. And the staff recommendation is that the commission review and approve the William Saroyan House Museum at twenty-seven twenty-nine West Griffith Way, historic property number one eight seven, pursuant to Fresno Municipal Code twelve dash sixteen seventeen, with the following conditions. There shall be no significant alterations to the exterior of the property visible from the public right-of-way, including but not limited to the residence itself, the driveway, the walkway, and the front yard. No statue, mural, or infostone shall be placed in the front yard or on the structure in a manner visible from the public street without additional HPC review and approval. Supporting documentation for non-substantial alterations to the exterior of the property, such as the proposed main entry door replacement and historical plaque replacement, must be submitted to and approved by the Historic Preservation Specialist prior to the commencement of work. The main residential entrance facing West Griffith Way shall serve as the public entrance into the museum. Signage shall be limited to the historical plaque replacement on the west side of the garage door and/or hanging sign above the door, subject to a sign permit. Alterations to the interior shall not affect the exterior of the property visible from the public right-of-way during construction or upon completion of project plans. Final construction documents with material notations will be submitted and approved by the Historic Preservation Specialist prior to the release of a conditional use permit. Staff will be allowed to photograph before, during, and upon completion of the project. And any changes to the approved project will be submitted to the Historic Preservation Specialist prior to the commencement of any review. I know it's a mouthful. So I leave it to you, the commission.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
One question on item nine. That's any changes to the exterior only. Is that correct?
I had left it just any changes, just so we can make sure we're fully aware of what's being proposed on the property as it is listed on the local register. We want to be aware of any alterations that are taking place.
Including the interior?
I guess this is. This is a question for y'all. I, I, I can revise if you, if you, the commission believe that the interior should not be a subject for conversation for this property.
But it would still be limited to the scope that.
Right.
You have on here.
Right.
So it wouldn't be every, any tiny little difference. It would just be to the extent we're even talking about the interior.
Right, and the approach that Laura has taken in her recommendation is to, you know, be very permissive with what's being done inside and to focus on keeping the exterior in its original state. And so with that as, you know, the, the tone that she set and the basis of her recommendation, I would imagine that if they did make a change to the inside and it didn't have a, any sort of manifestation on the exterior of the house, she would sign off on that and allow, but at least it would get called to her attention, and she could double-check that it doesn't, you know, manifest itself in the exterior, which is the subject of her recommendation and her review.
I think nine is, I think nine is vague, and I think because it's a museum, we should give them as much freedom to do what they need to do inside, and we should make it clear that all we're concerned about is the outside.
Because number six stipulates that, so there's a redundancy.
Well, so isn't that contradictory if they, it says any changes, any changes, nine, but six is talking about the interior. So I think that's, that's a conflict, and again, I'd like to give them the freedom to do what they need to on the inside.
Right, I think as long as they adhere to six, there shouldn't be a problem with nine.
But then why does it say any changes? Any changes?
No, I mean, it should be, no, it should be eliminated.
Right.
I'm, I'm with you on that.
That's just a precaution.
That, yeah.
I think I put it as a precaution on my part to make sure any alterations that are taking place on the interior don't affect what's going on on the exterior, whether during construction or upon completion.
To that point, I was involved with a museum in an old courthouse that, where windows had been walled in or were proposed to be walled in in order to maximize wall area to hang, you know, exhibits, and that affected the outward appearance of the building. So, you know, that was kind of the point of what I was getting at, is some of these, some interior changes could, you know, affect the exterior appearance, which I think is what we're trying to catch here.
Isn't that covered by number six?
Number six doesn't, number six doesn't talk about submitting to the specialist. Do we have a motion to alter the language of nine, or is that?
I think if I made a motion, it would be to insert the word exterior between any and changes. Any exterior changes to the approved project.
What about affecting the exterior?
Okay, perhaps any changes that have potential to affect the exterior? Does that work?
Yeah.
I think one of the, if you can hear me okay, I guess these.
You want to introduce yourself?
Oh, Ralph Catredorian. I'm supervising planner in development services overseeing on the conditional use permit process for this project. I think one of the things that maybe, it's important to maybe look at number nine and possibly reworded to where between now, the use permit approval, and as they are doing the work, and down the line with their project, that they may decide to make some other kinds of changes that weren't addressed or presented here. There may be very minor modifications, something on the exterior, landscaping or something, but structurally, if they come back with something, a different idea, it's that ability to capture that, just like going through plan check and realizing that there's some changes. They decided three months down the road, they wanted to do something a little different, and maybe it's reflective of that, something like that. That they can make some kind of minor adjustment.
To the exterior?
To the exterior, in keeping with the tone of the exterior exactly as it is. But again, it could be trying to look at any minor changes that might come about because they decide they want to pour concrete over here, or put some rocks over there, or something like that.
Just to clarify, you're, you're saying that's the intent of number nine?
That could be looked at, the intent.
So then adding the word exterior doesn't alter the intent, as you've described it?
Right. But it just allows them to be able to make a change, and who could they come to if they wanted to come to the specialist and say, hey, we're looking at, we need, we want to do this now. It wasn't called out before. Can we do this? But then again, you're correct, you know, number six does provide, you know, the alterations, not to, not to touch the exterior.
Are there questions for staff?
Now, just further clarification, we're not approving any kind of hours or amount of visitors. It's all staff handled and, and through the CEP process. So we now have, we have a motion on the table to say any exterior, so it's to accept the staff recommendation with the change to number nine, any exterior changes.
Technically, we haven't made a motion yet.
Oh, I was asking.
We're just asking questions.
I was asking if we have a motion.
I'll open it up to public for comment, and then I'll bring it back for, for, for a motion at that point. Any questions, staff? All right, I'd like to open up to the public, please. Any comments or questions from the public? Come on up, please. If you could state your name and address at the microphone there at the corner. Take your comment.
My name is Paul Miller, ten thirty-five East Olive Avenue. I'm working with this group to create this. The idea is not to change the outside of the building. It's because that's Saroyan's last residence, and there are probably other people here that can speak better than I can. But the idea is, you know, the interior is going to be a great hologram display area for Saroyan's work, so. The outside is, the, the idea is to have this fit into the community the same as it's always the way that Saroyan looked, where he, where he lived there. So I just think that's an important part of it, and I don't think we're trying to change any of that, so. That's, I don't know if you guys want to know more about that.
Any other comments? Concerns, questions? All right, I'll bring it back to commission. Additional comments?
I really pleased we can do this.
I know.
Hopefully we can do this, because part of it is sort of what took us so long. And then secondly, there are so few designated properties, and particularly house museums, of, from this period of time, that people think that, you know, to have a house museum, it has to be like the Mugh's Home or, you know, Lincoln's log cabin. And, you know, the world is, you know, people have been born since nineteen fifty. And, and so house museums are going to look different and seem different and be different. And the fact that it's in the middle of this neighborhood is perfect, you know, and I, I can't think of anything better than this house being a house museum. It's, it's another great opportunity that we have here in Fresno, and I hope we'll do, that the county will do the same with, with the Levine House, with Philip Levine's house that's in their purview, and so that we actually do recognize our writers and here in, in ways like this. I think this is a significant vote we can make tonight to approve this.
I would love to know when the anticipated opening day is, because we can start scheduling field trips for schools and those things, so.
Put it on Historic Preservation Week.
Put it on historic preservation week calendars.
Absolutely, we got some events ready to go, so.
I'm excited for my children.
I gotta tell you, I thought you messed up the address, because when I arrived there, I was like, there is no way. I'm in the wrong neighborhood. I am totally lost, and I'm sitting there in front of the house going, I can figure this out. I went to the HPC page and looked under, da-da-da-da-da. I was all over Google Maps. Okay, here we go. I had no idea. It was awesome, very much a learning experience.
I would propose that we change number nine, insert after approved project, language such as, that have the potential to affect the exterior, will be submitted to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? The guys have it.
Can I add one, one other note? I know a little, very little bit about this project. The firm that's designed this, they're a really, a really fine firm from Armenia, so the fact that we have this international design team doing this project in Fresno, I think is notable in itself, so.
Oh, very cool.
This is a really great thing. This is a really great thing.
I noticed that when I was reading the title block, so.
The bilingual title block?
Bilingual title block, yeah.
Love it. That's awesome. All right, nothing on the chairperson's report, unscheduled items, members of the commission?
There was a question from last time about commission members able to be on the Mills Act.
Yeah, and I can take that. I guess I was hope, I, I thought that at the last meeting, there was maybe going to be sent, oh, I, I thought that some of you may have known folks and to get specific names to see that this existed, but I don't, so I, I haven't gotten that yet, so if it was sent to anyone. Now that said, we went ahead and researched it anyway, and my belief, I'll, I'll just have to, we'll have to streamline the procedures and make sure that they apply equally, is that, that this is just a benefit that's generally available to the public, and so as long as we follow the appropriate procedures and any member of the commission is not associated with approving or disapproving their own property, I think it is not going to be a concern going forward. We'll do a formal opinion, but, but I, I do believe that's the general rule, and as long as, at least the way we're currently doing the program, it's fine. Where it gets trickier is if the program becomes way too popular, and then we start having to apply subjective criteria, then it's trickier in terms of how can you set one up where you can really feel that there's, there's not a lot of, or that everyone is treated equally, but at least for the time being, the way that we're doing it, where essentially if you meet designated criteria, you're in, you all should be fine. If we get to something like LA where they cap the total amount, they, and then they have this very sort of competitive potential process, then, then, then we'll have to be more careful. But hopefully we can design it appropriately so that even, no matter what, it's not a deterrent, because it sure seems like it would discourage folks from wanting to be on the commission.
Yeah, if every, if every currently eligible property in the city was on the Mills Act, it would still be less than 1% of the properties in, in the city, so, you know, LA.
About a brush.
Yeah, so, you know, we have four to 500 when you can consider, you know, you include contributors to our historic districts that would be eligible, and we have 125,000 parcels.
But we have seen a very, on a very minor level, that maybe the Mills Act encourages folks who might be a little marginal to seek, or not marginal, but who otherwise are not interested in pursuing a listing to maybe do it, but it doesn't look like we're anywhere near having a problem.
That's a benefit.
Which is actually one of the perks, is we hate someone who might have a home, we want to preserve, but they're reluctant to, to get on the register, then they would do it, you know, in order to go after this benefit, and then that would, that would grow the pool, so that's, that's a fair point, but, yeah.
My other question is if we could make Dawn number 0.1.
Still there. I've submitted my list.
Best case scenario, number five.
You have my list.
All right, any other, members of commission, any other questions, unscheduled items? Staff, anything?
We, we had intended to update you on where we were with Mills Act findings, so thank you, Dawn. And then it was also brought up last month about priority district lists, and I think it's especially topical, given the resurvey of the L Street District, and so I printed out a list. Okay, so I found a couple of lists, and one has four districts on it, Huntington, which was already, so good job, Bungalow Court, Chinatown, and North Park area. These were priority districts noted in 2010. That's what I have on record. I don't know, maybe it's something we want to revisit, so getting a priority district list set up. Just thought I would revisit that since it was asked by, who asked it?
Does that sound like the list?
Yes, that was one of the lists, yeah.
That's what we were able to find.
Yeah.
This, I mean, it's just a simple, you'll see, they're just like listed. It's really just the district. Huntington, Bungalow Court, Chinatown, and North Park area.
North Park is, also knows Lowell, right?
Oh, Lowell.
That was the name of the subdivision, you know, a hundred plus years ago.
And I imagine there are others you want to include on that list as well.
Yosemite, yeah.
Chinatown would be a good one. They got, they have that on there, right?
Yeah, that was in the 2010.
That Yosemite didn't show up anywhere. That was interesting, as much as we talked about that there are 18 properties, and, and the conversations had taken place, but Yosemite wasn't, you couldn't find it, or it wasn't, wasn't in the notes somehow or another.
I also have a list of surveys that were conducted by 2010, including the North Park area, the Pinedale Historic Resource Survey, the Upper Triangle areas of the L Street District, the City of Fresno Arts Culture District, Property, Historic Property Survey, the Broadway Row Historical Resource Survey. Do any of these sound familiar? Yeah, and that's all I have, so I'm welcome to input from you all in making a new priority district list.
Does older Armenian town need to be on the list since it's already been prioritized?
No, no, because it's already actually gone. The, this list would be, hey, what are we going to bring forward to this group in order to do your part of the process? So I think that appropriate, appropriate next step would probably be to.
You said Huntington, right?
Yeah, this list was from before Huntington. Right, Dawn had asked for the old list, but yeah, one, one of the things Laura and I talked about, you know, today actually, is, is going through and identifying every potential district that had been identified at one point or the other, and maybe bring that raw list to you guys and see, you know, which ones might be, out of all of them, might be, you know, priorities to, to begin looking forward, and we can kind of knock them out over time.
It's the area, excuse me for this, but lack of better terms, where Becky, if where their home is, is that?
That's North Park.
Is that North Park? Okay, not, not other Van Ness.
No, 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 it's, it's that stretch through Lowell. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Did I hear mention about Broadway?
Broadway Row.
Yeah, there was a survey conducted in 2004 for City of Fresno Broadway Row Historical Resource Survey.
Broadway between Belmont.
My, my recollection is that that was actually through what would now be called the Cultural Arts District.
I think that was between like Tuolumne and Stanislas, I think.
Yeah.
A bunch of commercial.
The survey that.
Commercial district, yeah.
The survey that was done was to look for a potential automotive, automotive industries district.
It's where the old Parker Nash Building was, and the Mayflower and all that, right?
Right.
Yeah, a lot of those buildings had been part of, they had widened Broadway at some, I think in the 20s, and then gone for this somewhat uniform Mediterranean look to all the buildings that came about in that era, and so it had a unique.
There's an apartment building on Broadway and Belmont. Is that on the register? It's a beautiful building.
It's great, yeah, right where Broadway kind of tees into Belmont there.
Yeah, yeah.
Northwest corner, I think.
Yeah.
Aco shop.
Northwest corner, yeah. That's a beautiful building, should be on the register.
Another district that our representative, mid-century modern guru Joe talked about was, like a mid-century modern district around the, it was kind of on the Shaw Avenue stretch, though, wasn't he talking about that? With the garden plaza buildings, and there's a bunch of kind of places tucked in there, and with all the, what the concern was, was the development on, on Blackstone and Shaw area, that some of those really cool buildings are kind of tucked back there, and with all that redevelopment and movement, with the bus rails and all that stuff was going to affect some of those things. But he noted, I think he rattled off a couple dozen at least, places along that stretch. I don't know if it was contiguous or not. He and Corona were kind of having conversations about contiguous and type and use and all this other stuff, but there was a lot of, there's a lot of commercial buildings in there that are of that same, same era, and maybe by one or two architects, and they just.
Kind of between Palm and Blackstone, right, they all have.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe even slightly, slightly west of Palm. That might be another place in there, because they were talking, one was refurbished. I'm trying to think of the trigger that, that brought it up. One was reskinned or something like that.
That was, I'm sorry, was a survey done, or was that just an observation that somebody had made, that there was this interesting color?
They were starting to change these buildings, and should we look at, just what Dawn said earlier, in a proactive way, creating?
Because I, I think a couple of them actually have some bricks, right? It's not developed, and some, some other things.
A great example is that office complex right across from Fig Garden Village, Stevens, it's a Nadobe, and it's starting to show signs of wear, and then, you know, I could see somebody getting a hold of that and putting aluminum panels on the whole thing.
Is that on the west side of Palm?
On the west side of Palm, right across from Fig Garden Village. It's like classic Bob Stevens.
Yeah, that would be.
There's enough Bob Stevens on Shaw and Blackstone.
Yeah, you might have to turn the corner.
Right, yeah.
To get them all, but.
That was another, that was like another.
There's a lot of neat neighborhoods in Fresno.
But that was during the period of time we were talking about Cedar Lanes, and we're having, we were having this conversation about Cedar Lanes and that architecture, and so that, it was again, a connaissance survey, but not a formal survey with a listing of the Googie buildings, as well as all the Bob Stevens were included in that.
It did help salvage those lanes, by the way.
I'm happy, and I'm happy you did. My house is happy you did.
Coming out of this, the document is a really good, like, sort of context statement about modernism.
Oh, you, you found it. Oh, that's great.
Yeah, and it's got the interviews. Yeah, but it doesn't get into the level of the survey, so there's like DPR forms and photographs. It's more like, here's types, here's architects, so it's a really good groundwork to do a survey if that's what you would want.
And you know about the Better Blackstone Design Challenge?
Yeah, absolutely.
There's been talk of some sort of survey, just because oftentimes Blackstone gets maligned as this terrible thing that has, you know, become devalued, and, and if you really look closely at Blackstone, there's some really fantastic modernism buried in there, and I think some kind of, you know, survey of Blackstone from, you know, I don't know, Ratcliffe Stadium up to, you know, Shar Hurnan would be really appropriate, and help, it would help that effort, too.
So are we making that list now with this conversation?
Sure.
It's unscheduled.
Well, you know, I, I think what, what this could do is if we go back and compile the, the entire list, we can add these, make sure these are in there, you know, as, as, as potential, and then you guys can, we can agendaize it, and you guys can discuss the entire list, you know, which is everything that's got a formal survey, plus a couple of these that don't, but still might be worth looking at, and then make a priority list for, for the whole thing.
Okay. Very good.
Any others that weren't mentioned yet, potential? Oh, yeah. Yeah, the, the South Industrial Survey.
Yeah.
Did we do any surveying already?
Yes, yeah.
South Van Ness, right?
South Van Ness.
Yeah, but expensive.
Lots of them.
Also known as Lower Fulton.
Either side of Palm between.
Yep, the Adeline Palm. Neighborhood, they, they refer to themselves as a historic district, but they're not Palm Adeline or Adeline Palm. I'm not quite sure what, what, how they refer to themselves. Adeline Palm.
Go parallel.
Yeah. Then along the, I call them the practice houses that are along on Barstow, that were built by the utility companies to, in the 1960s. There's several of them there, but I, I don't have the exact vernacular, I mean, term for the terminology for them. They were there, but they were featured in Sunset and all of those, there, along Barstow, near Palm, as well.
Terrace.
Terrace, yeah.
Terrace Gardens.
Terrace Gardens.
Well, let's put this on the agenda next week.
Yeah, making it item.
Cool.
Brainstorming between now and then.
And then the non-contiguous, you know, the Hitching Post, I don't know how many years we've talked about the Hitching Post, and there were 16 that were discovered, and then many more, and Bungalow Courts. And there was a survey done at Bungalow Courts.
Right, yeah, I've seen that one.
Funded by the state, I believe, wasn't it?
I got a, I got a question. I was looking at the Armenian Town sign. It was like a street sign.
Oh, yeah, the, the, the naming of Santa Clara Street.
Yeah, for the historic districts, shouldn't we have some kind of a special sign for the historic districts? Naming the historic district?
Yeah, interesting point, you know, in Wilson Island, we don't have anything like that. Huntington put in one, but that was prior to it actually being a historic district.
It was a district. I was hoping there would be a district.
But I think, I think it'd be great to identify these historic districts with signs bordering the, the districts.
Should, we can maybe look at some best practices out there, bring that as part of the discussion, yeah.
But I think it, you know, people drive through my neighborhood and don't notice the Wilson Island Historic District.
And I've seen that in other places.
Yeah.
Yeah. Tampa does an amazing job. There's a different color for each historic district in Tampa, and so you know when you've left one.
Doesn't have to be huge, a huge sign, just something to stick on top of the street sign, identifying as a historic district.
Even a different street sign.
A different street sign.
Much like Fulton street signs, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and the olive commercial area in Tower District, there's custom Art Deco inspired street signs, you know, Terrace Gardens, for example, they still have the big subdivision monuments on some of the corners. Terrace Gardens, for example, they still have the big subdivision monuments on some of the corners, um, you could even, you know, if that was ever to be designated and you wanted to do signage. They could maybe, you know, play off of, of that, you know. There are other subdivision monuments that are around town still too, from.
I just think we need to advertise our historic districts. I agree.
Well, we'll look into that too and bring that in as part of the, the brainstorming session.
Well, while we're there, um, it's, it's still open. The, uh, the plaques, um, are so expensive, uh, they're almost prohibitive and so you have very few of the designated properties that have the plaques. Perhaps we could look at a less expensive, um, plaque, um, other cities have found them. The coast, the brass is frequently stolen, for one thing, and other cities have found there's another, you can do the same thing that looks that way without. But very few of the properties have the plaques because of, of, of how expensive they are.
In the city, we did wood.
In.
I was gonna say, I think Pacific Grove is wood.
In Charleston, they're wood. And each neighborhood has a different logo.
And with CNC machines, it's pretty easy to get a wood carved out.
Yeah, let's, yeah, Pacific Grove is wood, yeah. Carmelo, I think is wood.
Although I like, I like the brass plaque, I got one on my house.
Yeah. Sure, nice.
Mine was stolen.
I haven't bought mine yet, but.
Mine's was stolen.
So was the one on the Sorion House, Sorion House was stolen too.
If you keep you, you can still see, see the shadow.
And most all of them on L Street were stolen.
Mine, if you pulled it off, you'd take the stucco with it.
So since we, since it was mentioned earlier, what is the status of Armenian Town Historic District?
I'll take that, um, even though I don't have a lot of real deep knowledge, um, we're still kind of in a holding pattern. Resolving, I guess, the outstanding, uh, legal and political concerns, um, and I've just been instructed that we don't have any more than that. And I don't even personally know, so, I know it's a very unsatisfying answer, hopefully by the next meeting, I can give a better answer. But we've been trying really hard to get a better answer and, uh, so far we don't have one.
I hope that doesn't, I hope the issues are not, will not go against the district in any way.
No, I, that I, that we can speak to.
It would hit the fan at this point.
No, 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 I don't, I don't think there's, yeah, that I can speak to, there is no concern about, about, uh, affecting the district in any manner. It's more kind of just formalities probably associated with the opposite of that, um, but it, uh, no, there, I, I think whatever project could potentially happen. It would be very much enhanced by the district, um, I mean, that's the whole attraction, I think, of that area is, is the historic qualities over there. So I don't, yeah, I don't, it's, it is frustrating the delay on getting the designation and, and certainly all of us will be asking everyone we can. For whatever updates we can, but I was specifically instructed, no updates, so that's all I got.
Okay, but maybe next month?
I, I think there's a good chance.
It'll only be two years.
I'll ask.
Yeah, you're welcome to ask whoever, whomever you'd like, please feel free.
I have a quick question. Do we have any events in the works for historic preservation in May?
We hadn't, we have not planned anything specific yet, um, I'm open to ideas, I think, um, as my first, uh, year here. A lot of effort's gonna be put toward promoting our incentives such as the Mills Act program, um, as well as our, I was, another announcement I was gonna give. Our recently adopted, um, Historic Preservation Mitigation Fund, um, you may know the funds were approved last year, I believe. For this fiscal year, fifty thousand dollars and now, um, City Council has approved, um, uh, our efforts to exercise that. To administer those funds to people, so we're in the, we're in the process of developing an application, um, for people who are interested, um, in taking advantage of that. It's, um, a reimbursement grant, um, that can be issued in the amount of seventy-five hundred or forty percent of project costs, whichever is less. And it's for, I think, all listed properties, including heritage, um, properties. And it's basically to reward work that's being done to preserve, rehabilitate, um, restore, reconstruct, um, historic properties.
Maybe fund the difference between final woodwork and stucco wrapping and fixing the wood siding.
For this first year, it's just. I'm a first serve, uh, but there is offers. Future, we may have to implement a competitive process, but for the time being, it's just first.
I have feeling that that one, we might get to a competitive process pretty quick on.
Hopefully.
That would be great, that means people are using it.
Yeah, I mean, we've not had anything to offer and now we've got this and the Mills Act, I'm kind of like overwhelmed. This is pretty amazing.
I know soon we're gonna have to start doing our, our training, so that's another thing I know we've either went out of town for. Last year we were, we had it presented here in the City of Fresno, so I don't know if that's something on the, the radar as to what, um, uh, training actions there are next.
Yeah, definitely on the radar, it's part of our CLG obligations and so we're always on the lookout for good options. If any of you guys see things that are being hosted anywhere that you think would be a good fit, you'd be interested in, let us know. Reach out to Laura, give her the heads up and, um, see if we can, um, we can have it, because CLG, uh, keep up on that, for sure. Not only for our CLG, but helps, helps us all do our jobs better, so.
For sure, okay, we'll keep a lookout.
Yeah, so let us know if you see anything good.
Yeah.
Um, so I hope that answers your question about historic preservation week for this year, um, like I said, I'm open to, um, suggestions as well. I know for two thousand and nineteen, um, Wilson Island Historic District wants to, is wanting to plan a centennial, um, celebration as well as the Fresno Historical Society. So, um, that'll be a big year, um, so let me know if you have any ideas for this year.
All right, cool.
If there, if we still have time to plan.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, commission, staff?
I have one more.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, we had a lot of things happen, um, you may have noticed in the news that there was a fire, um, that destroyed one of our, um, historic properties. This was on, uh, February seventh, um, um, and we lost historic property number two forty-three, uh, the Thorn Home located at twenty-five forty-three East Madison Avenue. I can show up, show a picture here, sorry, I don't have it on the screen, but maybe you recognize it. Anyway, it was, um, unusual for Fresno as a vernacular example of arts and crafts architecture. The woodsy quality of this home links it closely to the residential building of the San Francisco area of the early twentieth century, often called the First Bay Tradition. So we lost, we lost one home and then there was another fire adjacent to a, um, historic resource, so for, fortunately, we didn't lose two, just lost one.
Do we know how it happened, do we know how it started?
Um, the house was vacant, um, and, let's see, I'll look, refer to the report here. Apparently it, it had caught fire once before and this time when it caught fire, um, the fire department just decided to let it go because it was not salvageable, um.
Do you know who the architect was for the first one?
Um. I don't have it on hand if, if it was noted, um, but I can like, and send, I can send the noti, notification out to y'all.
What was its number again, though?
Uh, two forty-three. According to the news report, it wasn't clear what caused the fire, um, but they think it might have been someone who entered the house and started it, perhaps as a warming or cooking fire.
Coughing and sad, but. Fire on N Street, that building was occupied and it wasn't on the local register, but it, it was an older turn of the century, uh, I think it was a duplex. And if that one was not, it looked like that was a total loss.
Yeah.
So they've actually reached out to us about, you know, repairing and things like that, so hopefully that one will be back online.
Next to the sisters.
Right, exactly.
Sorry to end on that note, but, um, it's a very eventful month.
We have, I had needed to have a memorial, day of remembrance for all of our.
For other things we've lost.
Houses that we've lost.
Okay, uh, any unscheduled items from general public? Related or unrelated to anything we've talked about today, historic centric? Hearing done, I'll bring it back in, uh, next meeting, March twenty-sixth, adjourn this meeting, thank you very much.